Good, good. Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the city council meeting for Wednesday, February 27, 2019. This time, we will open with an invocation and then a pledge of allegiance.
We pray with the pledge. Dear heaven and father.
Just thank you for today. Thank you for this city. Thank you for all the people that live here. Thank you for our firemen, our policemen, and just ask for their safety. We live in a great community. Just bring us all together and embrace all, all, all people. Just thank you, thank you for today. When your sun's down, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have minutes to approve from the January 9, 2019 meeting. Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion from Warren, a second from Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This time, we will come down and have some service awards, and this represents 180 years of service to the city of Tyler. And if Don Martin would've showed up, it'd have been 200. That would've been a much more impressive number. The first service award is for a police officer of 20 years, Nathan Elliott. Thank you. Now, Patrick Mulligan, police officer, 25 years. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Craig Shine, police officer, 25 years. David Long, Assistant Police Chief, 25 years of service. Thank you very much for your service. And you don't even have the new jacket.
No, I see.
Oh, is that the new one?
Yes, yeah, the under one.
Oh, good.
We have everyone that goes over to this one when it's not us.
I like that. That was a good jacket. David Hall, Police Sergeant, 25 years. Congrats on this. I think that's in the body camera, too. It's a new one. Darren Grissom, Police Sergeant, 30 years of service. Thank you. Thank you. And Jimmy Freiter, Building Maintenance Worker for the parks for 30 years. 30 years. 30 years.
He decided that he wanted to be known as Godfather.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he is. Thank you, Jimmy.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Go ahead.
This is a request that City Council consider receiving a presentation on the update to the adopted comprehensive plan as a guide for making decisions for the future growth and development of our city. The Tyler 21 Comprehensive Plan, now called Tyler First, was originally adopted in 2007. The plan addresses issues such as transportation, downtown revitalization, historic preservation, parks and recreation, business and economy, as well as housing and neighborhoods. It defines a vision, as you can see here on the screen, for the future linked to overall goals and policies, and contains strategies and action items for achieving those goals. The comprehensive plan must reflect the needs and aspirations of the Tyler residents. It must be a flexible document and can change according to circumstances. A series of public meetings in conjunction with public surveys and web-based opportunities for public input should be held at least every five years. It is a 20-year plan, so we do, just do a check-in to make sure, is there anything that has significantly changed within our community or in the United States, you know, locally, or federally, or globally, that might make us want to change various items within our comprehensive plan. In 2014, the City Council approved the five-year update, which included text updates as well as a new chapter that was devoted to education. The upcoming five-year update to the Tyler First Plan will include three steering committee meetings, focus area workshops for future land use and annexation priorities, and three open houses. The first steering committee meeting will be held on March 28 at the Rose Garden Center. And you'll probably notice that this is, the schedule of meetings is a little different than our last update, and what we wanted to do is not put such a burden on our steering committee. It's made up of between 55, 60 individuals, and it was a very intense schedule last time. But this time, we've crafted a schedule that allows for the steering committee members to participate as much as they would like to. So, we have the opportunities for the steering committee meetings, as well as open houses and focus groups where we need focus groups. You can see here, this is our schedule for our open houses. The first one will be May 7, and it will encompass the parks, open space, our future land use and annexation, as well as historic preservation. They're grouped in areas. You'll see that they're grouped in areas such as, the first one is Healthy Community and Natural Environment. Our second meeting will be June 25, and it will, it's a grouping of chapters for livable built environment and interwoven equity. And then, our third, August 27. This will be held at Discovery Place Annex, and it is for a resilient economy and regionalism. So, those are our overall chapters, and we'll be asking the steering committee to reevaluate any change conditions within our community and see if there are circumstances that would generate a need to focus on certain chapters a little bit more heavily. Is there a need to apply more goals or priorities to certain areas of the comprehensive plan? And we expect that this plan, it'll be a 15-month process, and it will wrap up in around April, May of 2020.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. How are you?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Michael Howell, representing the Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, just the MPO for short. Just gonna give a quick update on the progress that's being made towards the Active Tyler Plan. First, for anybody who's not familiar with the MPO, we are a transportation planning entity that looks at the greater Tyler area, so outside of just the city of Tyler, also looking at the areas in Smith County, and it also includes the surrounding communities of going to Lindale all the way down to Troop. And what we have been developing is a pedestrian and bicycle plan that would go towards the entire region. It would be a connected network for the entire region. We have consulted a firm called Tool Design Group, who is a nationally-recognized firm for doing these sidewalk and pedestrian bicycle plans. The goals that have been designed for this project is creating a network that is gonna link the cities within the MPO boundary, specifically looking at the communities within those, connecting the schools, homes, parks, and businesses, and especially creating a network that is gonna be suitable for all ages and skill levels. Some of the information that they have up there looking at it is, a lot of the bicyclists that we have right now is what the consultants have called the strong and the fearless, the ones who are the most comfortable riding right next to any of the high-traffic areas. And, and that's good. It is what you wanna look at, but if you look at kind of the, looking at it nationally, that's usually about 7% of your potential bicycle population. So, trying to create a network that's going to be especially suitable for all ages, so you would be comfortable taking your seven-year-old daughter on a ride with you whenever you're gonna be going around, is really the goal that we're looking at going forward. This isn't a new plan that's coming forward. The whole region has been building towards this for many years. This is really building on the regional trail plan that was first developed in 2009. There were bike routes that were proposed in the Master Street Plan that was done in 2012, and then also, there was a sidewalk inventory analysis that was done in 2017 that looked at the various components, and this plan is the one that's gonna bring them all into one unified network. And there's already been success from the previous plans, especially for the legacy trails that is getting ready to wrap up was one of the recommendations that came from the previous ones, and also, looking at incorporating other plans such as the Bike Stripe Program that is being developed through UT Tyler, and that the city of Tyler's already working on getting the grant funding to implement that. So, knowing that this was already in progress, the purpose of the plan was to look at the next step forward. So, what began was doing a full-blown public engagement of really trying to understand the community. There was a lot of work that was done as far as going to the colleges, having pop-up workshops there to try to get surveys from the people, the students who were there, who we've always been hearing really are interested in having a unified network, reaching out to the local bike shops and going on the rides that were there, and doing events that were at ETX. There was one that the stakeholders were there for a combination group with the Tyler Young Professionals Network, and really got a good response from all of those. In addition to the public engagement, there was also a stakeholder group that was formed, which had representatives from the various cities, the county, TechStop, the RMA, everybody who would really be the stakeholders involved in that, oh, and also, the universities and the ISDs, the ones who really are the biggest users of the system, to try to get everybody's feedback to really get a unified vision. There was also a website that was created, so anybody who couldn't attend the individual meetings could go on and give feedback through the interactive map site for anything that they noticed really needed to be done. Just to give you a very high-level view of some of the draft recommendations that have already been made, the, again, this is a regional plan, so it has regional connections recommended, and there's individual recommendations for the various cities around the MPO boundary. Of course, today, I'm just gonna focus on some of the high-level things that have been suggested for the Tyler area. Looking at the downtown, some of the biggest draft recommendations are recommending upgrades to South Broadway Avenue, that would be from Houston going all the way into the downtown area, West Gentry Parkway. And then, looking at the greater north Tyler area, there's some proposals for West Martin-Luther King Boulevard and Fleschel Avenue. That especially would be connecting the hospitals to the school that's just to the north side there and going up to Stewart Park. Looking at south Tyler, some of the, the big ones to point out is gonna be upgrades along Old Bullard Road, Shiloh Road, and University Boulevard. So, again, these are all draft recommendations right now. We're actually have shared this document with our stakeholders right now, who are reviewing it and making the final reviews and any comments that need to go back to the stakeholders before this will come back for final approval. The, right now, the schedule is to bring this back to the City Council for a final review, which will be presented by the consultants from Tool Design Group. That, that will be on March 27. Then it'll be presented to the MPO's Policy Board on March 28 for final adoption. And just so you know how all of this works, is that the plan is gonna be going in, which helps to score projects for potential grant funding coming up. So, having that March deadline is really important, because April is when there's the first submission deadline for the, the two types of grants. The biggest one is called the Transportation Alternative Set Aside, which is just abbreviated TASA, and the other one is called Safe Routes to Schools. So, getting this plan done in March will help all of the applications going forward. And I attended a TechStop workshop to find out more about the process recently. I know there were at least five entities in the region who were there who were looking at submitting this, so we're really excited and here to answer any questions that you may have.
Michael, I've got a question. When you talk about the Houston to downtown on Broadway recommendation, what does that really mean on the ground? Is there like a little bicycle lane, or sidewalk, or, I mean, where, where's this gonna be?
That, that's what the, the plan is getting into. Without having all of the, the information in front of me, I can't tell you exactly what the proposal is, but the way that they're setting it up is that they look at the type of facility it is. Is it a more downtown? Is it a more urban, suburban, or rural area? And then, they make recommendations for types of facilities that have been successful in these areas. So, the plan doesn't necessarily say there's one solution to any type, but what it will do is for each one of these projects, it will make a recommendation to say, there's maybe three different types of facilities that can be considered, so that there's a little bit of flexibility whenever anybody's looking at the design.
Now, when, when you talk about, I can, I guess I can ask this later, too, but when you said schools, the grant for the schools, does that also apply to universities? Or is that more public?
I'll actually have to look into that one.
Let's figure that, I want, I'd like to know that answer.
Yeah, I'll have to reach out to TechStop and ask them that question.
Okay. But that'd be a future submission that-
Right.
-that we'll have. And so, if we could break that into one or, one or two in each category would be great.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, and the way that they explain the process is that even though there's two different funding sources, at the workshop, they said that all the entities would submit one application, and then they would do a review, and essentially would come back and say if they, if the entity is approved for one, or the other, or both.
Okay, good. Okay. Great. Thank you very much for the presentation.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. On to Z1.
This is a request to consider receiving, here we go. This is a request to change the zone to allow for the expansion of the Miracle Center Church. And these are unimproved rights of way that are located on the green striped area that you can see on the screen, and all of the adjacent properties are Zone C1 light commercial. However, they're developed with a mixture of single-family homes and undeveloped lots. The applicant intends to replat these rights of way into their existing church property so that they can expand the church. Out of the 24 notices mailed, none were returned in favor and one in opposition, with a total protest calculation of around 1.3%. The, the opposition cited concerns about taking away a portion of their property, and staff did follow up with the protester to clarify that this is not part of their property, and that did alleviate their concerns. The Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval of the closure of these rights of ways.
And, and questions of Heather? And Heather, understand, the rule is that not only is it not, it will become half the property of the complainant.
Right. That, that's the, that's the general rule, is that each part, adjacent property owner gets half of the right of way.
Right, right. So, it'll actually expand their property.
Exactly.
And I think you described that to them. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved to approve Z1.
A motion by Warren, a second by Nix. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z2?
This property is located at 440 South Vine Avenue. It's a request to rezone the property to allow for a mixture of residential and office uses. To the north is zoned AR adaptive reuse, and it's the location of an office. To the east is zoned multifamily and is undeveloped. To the south is zoned AR and multifamily, and it's the location of a thrift shop, thrift shop, shop in undeveloped land.
Easy for you to say.
I know, right? And to the west is zoned adaptive reuse and is the location of a single-family home. This is the former Nejum and Worthington, believe, law firm, and the future land use guide would be amended from single-family medium-low density to mixed-use center. The subject property is located just a block south from the downtown planning area, and it does have a diverse range of land uses in this area. It's, if it's not, I think it's just, it may be inside the Brick Street District or just outside, and the, in back in the eighties, most of this area was rezoned to adaptive reuse to allow for that mixture.
I think it's here.
So, the, the applicant is requesting to change the zoning to allow for a secondary building that's behind the, the residential structure that fronts on Vine, to allow for residential units. The existing two-story house would be, and is also a local landmark, is designated as a landmark, and would allow for one residential unit as well as an office. So, it's a live-work, and then the, the additional structure would be for other units. The property will provide additional parking spaces, but no exterior work is going, is planned, and if it were, it would have to obtain a certificate of appropriateness, because it is a local landmark. And we have talked to the applicant about that, and they have no plans to change the exterior.
We, we, any questions of Heather? We do have a card for someone for questions only, but if there are no questions, you don't wanna-
Moved to approve.
A motion by Nix, a second by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Z3?
The applicant is requesting a zone change to allow for a Brahms Ice Cream Store as well as a grocery store. To the north is an east and south, our Zone C2 general commercial, as you can see in the red. The property to the north is the location of an Aldi grocery store and, and developed land. The property to the east is a single-family, and the properties to the south are developed with single-family homes and Popeyes fast-food restaurant. And across the loop is Zone C1 is the location of IHOP. The future land use guide would be amended from single-family medium-low density. However, the PCD, the Planned Commercial Zoning designation, enables the ability to provide for a sensitive transition between the commercial and residential uses, and you'll see that on the site plan. The site plan shows a 6,000-square-foot restaurant with associated parking and one access from Loop 323 and one access from West Elm. This will remove one of the current driveways that is located on West Elm. The site plan limits the use to C1 uses. So, rather than the C2 that is existing today, it, it actually is essentially downzoning it to C1, so you can't have outdoor display and other types of, you know, sale like a car lot, or those more intense commercial uses. So, it's limiting it to C1, and also, providing a very generous buffer yard between the existing C2 that's developed as a single-family home. It, it actually exceeds our, our buffer yard standards, which is in the UDC, and allows for a 30-foot Type B buffer yard that includes a seven-foot wall and is proposed along that eastern property line. Due to its location, the grocery store will serve as an amenity to the neighborhood as it will allow easy access, walkable access to, to the location. The neighbors have expressed concerns with additional traffic and noise related to the develop, the development, and the applicant is proposing that seven-foot wall, which exceeds the minimum UDC requirements, in addition to the large buffer yard to help accommodate those concerns. And they've also moved the dumpster location away from the residential area, and you can see that the dumpster now is located just north of the footprint for the building, instead of, it was previously located more to the east, and, and now it's further away. And that does also exceed our standard in the UDC. The, out of the 11 notices mailed, zero returned in favor, five in opposition, with 13.29% protest. And the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 6-1 vote recommends approval.
Go back to the, and just to let everybody know that's here, that the reason that sometimes during the presentations, and even, we have a few cards, we may be looking down, we're seeing what you're seeing up here, we have computer screens, so it's not that we're not paying attention, I promise. We're looking at the site plan. So, you, the buffer yard's how big?
It's 30.
Did you say 30 feet?
Yes, sir.
And did you all say, I, I can't read the note.
Okay. It's a, it's a seven-foot fence, and then, it, it allows for a type B, which would be buffer, or plantings, which is a mixture of trees and shrubs.
Does that note say it's a brick wall?
I think that's what it says on the third word, or, seven-foot tall brick wall.
Are you shaking your head yes? Okay.
Okay, so that, one of the cards is Mark Precious, so we'll call him up later. Not now, not now. We have, we have three cards.
Can we see the pictures of the, of the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
So, it's just right across the street from Popeyes, right?
Yes.
Heather, the house on the bottom right, the house occupied?
I believe so. Wait.
And it's directly behind the Popeyes. Is that the Popeyes trash container in the picture there, Kyle?
Would you all, I have, I have three cards. Would you all like to hear the cards and then-
Yeah.
-ask questions? Is that appropriate? Okay. Ms. Miller?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, Ms. Stewart, come on up.
Sure. Ms. Stewart, come on up. And just please state your name and address when you come up.
Good morning. I'm Glenda Stewart, and I'm at 3803 West Elm Street, which is directly next door to the house that they plan to demolish.
Okay.
So, my home will be next door to, to the New Braun's.
It will be behind it, right? It's the one-
Yes.
-behind it. Yes, ma'am.
So.
Okay, since we don't have a very active meeting, you can have five minutes.
Okay. I'm here speaking on behalf of the people that's located within 200 feet from that location and also the neighborhood. We already have one fast-food restaurant in that area, which blocked traffic, trash in the yards, and the smell of grease 24/7. There's been times when I cannot get in my driveway. We have people parking on the side of the street. We have dumpsters. This morning, I was sitting there about 6: something, doing my Bible study, and you hear a dumpster banging. I mean, and then we have one sometime pick up at Popeyes at 5:30 in the morning. And then, we have, like I say, we have trash all in the neighborhood, and with this coming in our neighborhood, it is a 6,000-square-foot building. And their hours are 6:00 AM- And their hours are six AM to ten forty-five, seven days a week. Now, we have a cleaner there. The cleaner is there now. They're not open on the weekend. They're not open at six, I mean, they open earlier, but they don't stay until ten forty-five. With a, a business this size that serves breakfast, lunch, dinner, and also grocery store, it will be horrific, the traffic. It will bring three times as much traffic as we already have. And with them planning the driveway directly cross from Popeyes, you got people coming in off the loop, people going out of neighborhood, people trying to turn into Popeyes, people trying to turn into Brahms. It's gonna be a mess. Also, I don't know if any of you all ever been on that side of town during lunchtime, the intersection of Loop three twenty-three, where people are trying to go into Walmarts, they're trying to turn into our neighborhood. You have a Popeyes there, now they're putting a Brahms there. This neighborhood is a quiet, wasn't quite peaceful neighborhood. We have people that are retired. We have people that have children. And with the traffic being so bad on Loop twenty-three, we have people coming from Urban Street up Tournament through our neighborhood to get to Popeyes, to get to the cleaners, and when they leave, they cannot get back out because the traffic is so bad, so that brings them right back through our neighborhood. So we have people running stop signs. It's not familiar with the neighborhood, and it's just, to me, it's dangerous. Like I say, we have children playing in the neighborhood. We have people that has retired there. And it's, it's just, it's really, to me, there's a lot, we're not against growth on our side of town, but there are a lot of other vacant lots and not in a neighborhood that you could put this, uh, size of a restaurant. This restaurant is larger than both of the two that we have in Tyler. So why would you want to put this in a neighborhood? So I'm asking you, each of you, would you want this located next door to your house? Whether you put a seven-foot or ten-foot fence, I can still hear the dumpster because I hear the dumps from Walgreen. I hear the dumpster from McDonald's. So regardless of what size fence you put there, it's still a nuisance, the trash cans, and then we have a wooded area that's located behind us. We already see possums and other creatures, you know, on our patio. So with this, another food, I mean, another restaurant there, it would be worse. So I'm asking you to just think, if this were your home, would you want a Brahms located next to you? And I know you all elected officials that make these decisions, so I'm asking you to please, uh, you know, vote this down, 'cause it's not good for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Appreciate your comments. Uh, Ms. Miller?
Good morning, Ms. Mayor, Council.
Morning.
My name is Trinesha Miller, nineteen oh six, um, White House, Texas. I'm here on behalf of the citizens on West Elm Street. I am a licensed realtor in the state of Texas. I just want to hit my facts because I had been told previously that I would only have five minutes. So I want to first, um, give you a little bit of, uh, facts on the area. The Westwood Hills subdivision was established, I believe, in nineteen sixty-three as a residential neighborhood. Uh, the second fact is that the citizens of these impacted areas, the six citizens in the two hundred feet area of the, where the Brahms is going to be, their property is zoned right now as a C two. Those citizens were never notified that their, uh, check, their property had changed from a residential to a C two. So we also went back through the neighborhood, um, and talked to some of the people that signed the petition for the Brahms. Uh, explained everything to them. They were not made aware that the restrictions were being lifted or changed to the residential neighborhood. It, it was told to me that they were only told that a Brahms was coming to the area and were they for or against it? And they were, also told me that they were, they never signed any petition in front of a notary, and I have the documents here if you all would like to see those today. Kind of reiterating what, uh, Ms. Stewart, uh, elaborated on to you, the area, it's not that the neighbors are not for the Brahms, and myself especially being in the, uh, field that I'm in, you want growth to come to Tyler. But they would prefer to see the growth used, the business, um, used in the area that's already zoned the C two and not take in the home, so it'll be closer coming into the neighborhood of the, of the Westwood Hills. Kind of what I'm saying. So that's kind of where we stand on that, and we're asking today that with the issues from the petition, even though we know that happened in planning and zoning, but there's several issues here, and then with the issue that the residents were never notified that their property was going from a residential setting to a commercial zone, we're asking today that you would please consider turning this down or tabling it until, um, it can be, you know, they can get further clarity. The residents did try to reach out to Brahms several times, as well as I did. Uh, we never received a callback from them. It was stated in the planning and zoning meeting that they would meet with the residents before the council meeting, and that has not taken place.
Okay. I'm gonna let you finish, and I've got questions for you since you're a realtor.
Okay.
Have you finished?
Yes.
Okay. So when you start, when you're talking about a petition, what, define a petition. Are you, are you talking about a deed restriction signing, or what are you talking about?
When I first came on board to help the, the residents of the Westwood Hills, I was told that, um, a petition had went through the neighborhood for the citizens to sign for the Brahms to come in. But these are the documents that went to planning and zoning here. But with this document, this lifts the deed restrictions for Brahms to come in to do what they need to do to change the residential property to a C two. And then the citizens that, some of them that signed this, also signed this, this states that there was not a notary present when they came through to sign the lifting of the deed restrictions.
Do you want to provide that?
Yes.
Now, now, also, uh, since you're a professional in the business, uh, let, uh, let me just spend some time for a second talking about, um, the role of the city, okay? So when you have private, private property rights, right? The biggest restriction on that private property right would be deed restrictions. And that is something that the city, and, and that, uh, city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, okay? I haven't run this by you, right? Okay, so we have, uh, uh, that is the, the most restrictive on the rights of a private property owner. That is not something that the city regulates.
Okay.
Uh, every once in a while, you'll see, when we have issues, you'll see some council members might ask about deed restrictions, and I believe I did the, on this one originally.
Okay.
But we have no, uh, authority on regulating that. So I understand that there is an issue that, that you were raising and the neighbors are raising about, uh, the validity of the process. Now, the difficulty is, we're not the governing body for that. Uh, whenever you have private property rights and restriction disagreements, uh, that is a Smith County courthouse. That's a civil matter.
Correct.
Okay? That's not something we regulate. So, uh, uh, it's just, it's just kind of like the issue of drainage that gets brought up, and sometimes we have questions. We really have, zoning does not, is not contingent on that. Because that's a, another step in the process down the road. But this is not a process that we can handle at this level. What we can talk about is the validity of the zoning request. And that is something that, um, I'm sure we'll all have comments. We have one more person, uh, and we'll, we'll all have our opportunity to express opinions. I'm not taking that away from the council members, but I'm just saying on that item, uh, that is, like I say quite often, above our pay grade. Which it is. Uh, and so we'll be focusing today on, uh, zoning issues, okay?
Okay.
So, um, but thank you very much for bringing that information and stressing your point of view, but I just wanted to talk about the, uh, where we are and what our role is as a city.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And so thank you very much, and at this time, we'll have the next card, and then we'll, um, I'm sure we'll have questions, uh, for Heather, um, after the next person. Mr. Priestner?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Priestner, thirty-eight fifteen Old Bullard Road.
And, and you, you are representing the?
The development.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and as Heather stated, this is, this is a project, uh, okay, one thing I want to point out, um, as, as the neighbor stated, this, this project, you know, it, it's got some varied zoning in this neighborhood. Uh, the properties, the two properties going east of our east line are zone C two, the three houses on the south side of West Elm going east are zone C two as well. This property right here is the one that we're really essentially talking about changing the zoning off. These are currently zone C two. While we're doing a PCD on the entire so that we can set the footprint in place, put the wall in, put the buffers in, uh, they're currently allowed a right to have C two uses on this part of it. This property here was originally zone C two, and it was changed back to R one A back in the early two thousands as, when we changed away from our cumulative zoning, um, it was a mortgage issue and they needed to change the zoning back in order to get funding on. So it was originally zone C two, brought back to R one A. Now we're looking at changing it back, but rather than going to straight C two, what we wanted to do was, in order to protect the neighborhood, go to a PCD where we can place in there a buffer and a wall. Because currently, if this were just zone C two, because their properties are zone C two but used as a house, there's no buffer requirement in the organs because they're, they're the same zoning. So if we feel like...
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I gotta stop you real quick. So the lot on the, to the east is zone C two?
Yes.
Okay.
C two, C two.
I don't, I don't think I knew that. Okay, go ahead.
So, in order to do this, the, the thing I would point out is, number one, the part that we're changing is, I mean, we're changing the zoning on the off, but the real change from R one A to PCD, this section here has no structure on it. What we're doing is using it for additional parking, circulation, and for that buffer. The reason we're doing the circulation and want that additional room is so that we don't have the same issues that Popeyes has. They don't have direct access to the loop, and they have a really tight turning radius in there, which makes people park on the street if they've got trailers and things like that. And that's one of the things we've heard it meant to P and Z being. So we have circulation both around the building plus in here, um, and having the access at two points will, will reduce the amount of traffic that's on West Elm. Um, so we think that that's important in looking at how we overall. The other thing is that we're taking, there are existing buildings on this site. There's the, the, the coffee shop, the Hat Coffee Shop thing, and the cleaners plus the house. We're reducing those footprints down into one building that's moved up away from the neighborhood. I did reach out to, to Ms. Stewart, the next-door neighbor, um, and, and while she does, still does not want development adjacent to her, as we all understand, um, we offered up doing a seven-foot solid brick wall both sides, um, set a foot off the property line so we could landscape on the inside of it. Um, and the only caveat that she was concerned about with that was that she wants to make sure it doesn't conflict with any visibility into her driveway. So in the comments, it says that the height of the wall is seven feet, but the construction of it is not to impair with her visibility to her driveway. So as we get to the point where we're constructing it, we could work with her on the height setback, whatever she wants to make that work.
Can you point to where her house is?
Her house is this one right here.
Okay.
And how long has that been C two? What year did she say?
The city might know when the original C two was. I mean, I would guess it was... But it was, it was probably zone C two, I would guess, back in the eighties.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna request after, Linda, after, uh, Mark's finished, I'm gonna ask for the zoning map to be pulled back up. I wanna look at it too, because that's...
So on behalf of answering questions, if you have. I'm gonna leave that one.
Yeah, yes. I'd like to have Heather, Heather come back up and pull the, pull the zoning map back up. That's interesting. So I guess that's what Ms. Miller was alluding to, that it's C two, like, four more lots back in to the subdivision, right?
Right. And the, and the subdivision was developed in the sixties, I believe, and back then, we had pyramid zoning, so it was perfectly fine to develop a residential property within a, a commercial zoning. Now, and that did change, as, as Mark mentioned, uh, I believe in nineteen ninety-nine or two, early two thousand.
Right. And, and so, yeah, those are all current, those four lots are currently used for residential housing?
Yes, sir.
So those individual, uh, homeowners could actually come in and petition to be consistent with their zoning, and we have a, a plan to help them with that. Is that correct?
We don't have one in place now. Previously, in years past, we had, we had one for the R two zoned properties. We didn't have one in place for, for this scenario.
Okay. But, but they are, they have the right to come back in and?
Yes.
Request R one A zoning if they wish?
Yes, sir.
And go through the process.
And, and, and we see that from time to time, especially as folks are, are ready to sell their home, um, and I think Mark might have mentioned this too.
And at the point that you refinance, the lender requires you to be, uh,
Zoned appropriately.
Have the appropriate land use zoning, so... Okay, I, I guess I didn't realize that C two went that deep. But, uh, okay. I, any questions? Any more questions?
I'd, I'd just like to say, I don't have a problem with this zoning, and we love having new businesses in Tyler, but I believe this is the third time that we've dealt with a Brahms development. Uh, the first one was on South Broadway, south of the post office, on the east side of the road. And then we had one in Old Jacksonville. Neither of those got built. But this one, because of the C two zoning, I can't see any reason that we couldn't approve this one. I just didn't know if the other council members remembered that we had had to...
Well, yeah, I remember the Old Jacksonville one, yeah.
And the one on Broadway?
Yep.
Regarding the, the growth, I mean, I'm all for the, the growth with a, with a new restaurant. Ms. Stewart, I live on College between Fourth and Fifth Street, and we moved there twenty-five years ago, and since we've moved there, we've got a Jack in the Box, and I hear that dumpster. And we've got a pizza joint, and I got a donut shop. And every morning I go out in my backyard, I smell donuts, but that, that's a good smell, I like it. And, and all that to say, you know, I hear the dumpster. But on the, on the opposite spectrum, a lot of times my wife and I will just walk to the pizza joint and grab a piece of pizza, so it's, it, the convenience of it sometimes overwhelms the, the, the other part of it. So, uh, I mean, I made the choice to, to, to live in an area that, that is busy, uh, and sometimes you, you get where you live, you get, you get what comes along with it. So, uh, I'm kind of like Councilman Sellers, it's just hard to, to turn something away that, that's gonna be, I think, good for the, the, the west part of Tyler.
Go ahead. Any other comments or questions?
Well, I just want to make one comment, Mayor, is, uh, fifteen years ago, I built the CC's Pizza on the northwest side of town and, and realized then that, that to better serve the population on the north side of Tyler, that I needed to be there, and, and that's why we spent the additional dollars to build a high-quality development, to be more like a family dining restaurant. Uh, we knew that we would be bringing some increased job opportunities. We knew that we would be bringing some increased job opportunities to the area, but also providing diversity with dining and retail opportunities also too, and so I'm actually excited about the development coming, coming in. It's a neighborhood restaurant, it's a family restaurant, it's also a grocery store, so I, I like the idea of increased development on the north side of Tyler, so I think the zoning's appropriate.
Mayor and Council, this is my district, have great concerns about development in my district, it's the northwest district. Just like to say, I thank you guys for your comments, and I just wanna kinda go back and refresh my memory, and maybe talk about what has taken place with me, with this project within the last two to three weeks. About two weeks ago, I met with Mr. Williams Callman, who's a resident in that area, to have a meeting with some of the concerned citizens, and I did do that about two weeks ago, and my major question is, what are, what are your concerns about Brahms coming to the neighborhood? And I heard three major things. Number one, traffic, noise, and crime. The other one was, we need them to downsize their building from six thousand square feet to fifty-four hundred square feet. And the most one that's really striking and sitting in my mind was, the petition was illegal. People that signed the petition stated that, number one, they didn't live in the district, and number two, it was not notarized properly by a notary public. Since then, I've had some conversation with Ms. Miller about that piece. My major concern here, and I'll look at it from this standpoint, we've talked about the traffic and the noise, understanding that the buffer will kinda contain some of the noise, but living on the loop, you're always gonna have traffic and noise, whether this is Brahms or Joe Blow's Pizza Hut, you're gonna have traffic and noise in the area. And as far as the crime, I can't see or say that crime's gonna increase or decrease. Crime can be measured in many, many ways, but those are some of the concerns that the citizens had, and I just wanna express to them what I, what I looked at when I was there. And the other concern was, the building was too large, and I agree, you know, it's larger than the normal Brahms that's already in existence, but this would be something that this community can be proud of, to say, we have the largest Brahms in the community, and I don't know if that's gonna sit well with the community, but to change it from six thousand square feet to fifty-four hundred square feet, that's something that this council cannot do, because it's already been platted, if I understand, and turned into the county, as far as the square footage of the building. And like I say, the other major concern was the, I guess, the petition, and what Ms. Miller passed out here, I'm looking at a petition that was saying that we don't mind having a Brahms, we support having a Brahms, but we just don't like the ideal how the deed restrictions were lifted, and to me, that's the main issue. Coming into this not knowing a whole lot of legal obligations, I start to inquire about deed restrictions, and found out that whatever comes on, as far as deed restriction, has to be signed, because originally, they were turned down because of deed restriction, and for whatever reason came back, maybe four or five weeks later says the deed restriction has been removed. To, to, to look at the argument about it was illegal, I don't know whether it was illegal or not, because I didn't do it, that's something that I've been told that has to be taken up with the homeowners and the court system. So, to me, the major issue here is, the petition for the deed restriction, is that legal or not? I don't know, and from what I'm hearing with the mayor and other people is that, that's something that we cannot address as far as the C2 or, or the PCD. That's something that we cannot address as far as the, the restaurant is concerned, and I feel the pain, and, and just like Ms. Miller said, nobody wants to live next to anything that's gonna create noise issue, but if we take that position, then our city will never grow. We'll just be stuck in the same thing we had twenty-five, thirty years ago, and when I make decisions based on what we're talking about today, I, I basically try to make a decision on three things, and that is, number one, is it immoral? Is it unsafe? Is it detrimental to the community? And when I look at those three, I can say no, it doesn't apply to those three, and I feel for, I know what the, the citizens are looking at and what they're all against. I've been knowing Mr. Stewart a long time, Dave Campbell, I don't know them, but as far as the, the Brahms, it's based on what we have before us, and as far as the zone, the zone change is correct. What I hear is that the, the petition is the basic issue here, and we cannot address that at this particular time, and I will encourage the citizens out there, if you feel like this was done illegal, get an attorney, go to courts, and see if you can resolve it, because at this point, I don't think there's been a actually sale, and maybe something can happen that could do that, but as far as this council's concerned, I feel like we should go ahead and do what is best for our community and our city, and at this particular time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z3.
Second.
Motion by Moore, second by Nix. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all very much for being here today, and one thing that I would also state is that this is really, to have development in the northwest sector of the community, especially on the loop, is a very good thing, long-term, for the overall community, and so I'm, I'm excited to see that happen as well. And just another note, I'd also like to say that you can actually also discuss with whatever waste company is picking up trash before working hours, when it adjusts a neighborhood, and they can actually change their schedule, so that, that is a possibility, you can work with staff on that as well.
And that was addressed during the planning and zoning commission.
That's correct.
Graham Mayor.
That's right, that's right.
See what you can do to coordinate that.
Yeah, great.
I don't know if Ms. Miller needed these back.
Ms. Miller, would you like your...
Yes.
That back, okay. Thank you very much, on to, oh, no, Z4, one more zoning item.
This is a request to change the zoning to allow for office use. This is located just north of the Vine property that we looked at earlier, and it's also north of Front Street. This, the surrounding area has various types of zoning, has office zoning, and it's developed as a single-family home and used as an office, which is a local historic landmark known as the Wooldert House. To the south and west is Zone General Commercial and is developed with a single-family home and the East Texas Alarm Company, and to the east is Zone Industrial, as well as downtown Business Arts and Culture, and is developed with the single-family homes and commercial buildings. This request is consistent with the future land use guide that identifies it as high-density mixed use. The property was rezoned to multifamily in 2017 to be remodeled into five units, but that proposal never transpired, and now they would like to come back with an adaptive reuse so that they can have a live-work situation. Of the twelve notices mailed, one was returned in favor, zero in opposition, and the planning and zoning by seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Questions of Heather? Entertain a motion?
I move to approve Z4.
Second. Motion by Sellers, second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. O1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
In the nineteen seventies, there was sweeping environmental protection laws passed, such as the National Environment Policy Act, the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy-two, the Safe Water Act in nineteen seventy-four, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act of nineteen seventy-six. Although these were national laws, the point was clear, state, county, and city governments needed to enact ordinances and laws to protect the waters and prevent pollution. The eighties and the nineties saw several amendments to the Clean Water Act, and the City of Tyler passed an ordinance that governed protection of waters and limited pollution in the waters of the state. The second legislation of significance to the City of Tyler in the nineties was the Pollution Prevention Act of nineteen ninety. This act focused on government, industry, and public attention toward reducing the amount of pollution through effective changes in operations and regulations in treatment and disposal. In nineteen ninety-six, the City, the City of Tyler passed an amendment to the existing liquid waste and grease ordinance. Last council meeting, the council passed the fats hauls and grease ordinance in conjunction with the requirements of the consent decree. Our environmental engineer, Paul Newhouse, is prepared to discuss the additional changes that are required by the consent decree.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning. Again, my name is Paul Newhouse, environmental compliance engineer, and these changes that we are asking for, really are intended to complement, is the word I like to use, our new fats hauls and grease ordinance, because they address the liquid waste haulers who service these grease and grit traps. So, quickly to go through some of the changes, this is a, this ordinance has, has been around for a little while, the TNRCC became the TCEQ back in two thousand and two, so there's some, some language updates that we're proposing, some grammatical corrections, there's some consistency in some of our definitions and references that we're bringing them more in line. Currently, the fees for the, the liquid waste haulers and the disposal are in the ordinance, and we pulled those out to give us flexibility when we need to adjust those or change those. The, another big thing that's in there is the trip tickets for waste. Generators are responsible for their waste, and when the waste is picked up, they're given a copy of the, of the waste ticket, and then the generator keeps a copy, I mean, I'm sorry, the disposal facility keeps a copy, the transporter keeps a copy, and the city gets a copy, but the new requirements are that a copy goes back to the generator that shows that the waste was in fact disposed of properly, so that's why we're moving from, from a four-part to a five-part ticket. The, there's some other changes that are, make it a little easier, more friendly for the city personnel, for the staff that manage this. The, right now, when a truck pulls up to the disposal facility, they have to look through their paperwork and try and figure out what the capacity is, we're asking that they put the capacity right on the door of the truck. We're making one permit per liquid waste hauler. Right now, if you, the, the permit is for three trucks, so if you've got a waste hauler with more than three trucks, he's got actually two permits, so we're proposing to change that to where it's one permit for the hauler, for the company, and then per truck, however many trucks he's got, so just making it easier on him, easier on us to keep up with it. Again, the fees are streamlined, they're a little, little easier to understand. The, the word, the grease, is now strictly prohibited and listed in the ordinance. Previously, it wasn't, it was just speaking more of septicage and non-septicage waste, so we expanded that a little bit and, and put that in there. Trip tickets, right now, there, there's a lot of handwriting on there, and if a guy doesn't need handwriting, they're hard to read, so we're changing our trip tickets. Now, that's not really part of the ordinance, that's just kind of the backstory, if you will, on our side to help make it easier for ourselves and the haulers. For the haulers, again, with one permit per liquid waste hauler, they're, they've got a little bit more flexibility there. Currently, we're asking them for some sensitive information, we've been asking for there, and this is in the ordinance, their social security number, home phone number, home address, you know, some things that allow for some security potential issues, so we've taken that out. These liquid waste haulers are licensed by the state, so they're already vetted, and they have to be licensed by the state before we will license them to haul this waste within the city limits of Tyler. That's basically what we're doing. Again, I mentioned the streamlined fee schedule, and before, we were requiring the drivers to carry a separate card that had their permit information on it, and we're just gonna provide them a D count now that they stick right on the side of their truck, so the permit information is right there, the permit number, and, and again, when they put their, their capacity on the side of the truck, it makes it easier when they pull up to the, to the wastegroup treatment plant to, to dispose of the, of the grease, and for us to regulate and check on them. And again, some more of the backstories, we're making it easier by putting the permit online and just making access to that simpler for them. So, with that, I guess we would ask that the council accept these proposed changes to the ordinance.
Any questions?
I do have one question, Paul.
Yes.
When we had discussed this earlier, the generator is gonna have to, they'll get their completed ticket back, and they'll have to maintain those records on-site, or is all...
That is, that is what they need to be doing, so that when we show up to do an inspection, we can ask them for that. You know, right now, they, they show that they've had it pumped, but oftentimes, what we've found is maybe it wasn't fully pumped, or they just had it pumped yesterday, and it really doesn't look like it, so, so we're, that's part of the, the rest of this, is we're trying to educate them and trying to make them understand that, don't just send the guy back there to pump their grease trap out, go back out there with him, and stand there next to him, and actually sign, we've got a lot of trip, trip tickets that are signed by agent. You know, nobody's name, nobody from the generator that's actually there, so that's part of our ongoing process to improve this, if you will. But yes, then they get a completed trip ticket, they put the two together, and yes, my waste was taken where it should have gone. And, and, and I say liquid waste haulers to the west side of wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, we accept septicage, so these liquid waste haulers are pumping septic tanks as well, the grease and grit traps aren't gonna, will not be going there, so where, whatever facility that they take that to, that information will be on those trip ticket, or that completed trip ticket back to them.
Well, I think that closes the loop, and it encourages the generators to inspect what they expect, so with that, I move to approve O1.
Motion by Westbrook.
Second.
Second by Nix. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Company today requesting that the City Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager on behalf of the police department to apply for and accept a justice assistance grant from EdcoG. Now, it's our intention to request a negotiation recording and control system that we use during our crisis negotiations events, one of those pieces of equipment we hope we never use, but it will be there for us if we do need it. It's not required that we put a match, but we usually, sometimes they, they, they ask for a match of up to twenty percent, so we build that into our asset forfeiture dollars through the budget process, but right now is the time to apply for that grant, and if it's accepted, to request that you give a resolution allowing us to proceed.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Nix, second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. M1?
Good morning again, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
According to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and our TPDES, Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, the south side wastewater treatment plant has a treatment capacity of nine million gallons per day. As you are aware, because of increased flows, concerns that the City of Tyler has experienced and identified for several years, our flows have increased due to infiltration and inflow. According to TCEQ requirements, planning is required when a wastewater facility reaches three consecutive months of exceeding the actual daily flow. And just to give you a sense of that, for the last six months, we've exceeded five out of the six months. So, seventy-five percent or more of permitted capacity does require us to be planning. We have done over seventy, we, we have done over the seventy-five percent move, just like I explained, so construction is then required to start when the flows reach ninety percent or more of the permitted capacity for three consecutive months. You know this rule by the seventy-five ninety, so it is important for me to note at this point that we are not required to undergo construction yet, however, planning for expansion is required, so a plan to address future growth is the objective here. So, our city engineer, Lisa Crossman, Ms. Crossman, will discuss in detail the actions that the City of Tyler Water Utilities has taken to address the planning phases of this project.
Great, Lisa, I, I guess, since Jimmy set you up, that means we gotta go by...
I, I guess, since Jimmy set you up, that means we've got to go back to the very beginning since we've already bought the land, and we'll go through the whole process, the last ten years, you want to do that?
I wasn't planning on going back to the beginning.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in twenty-ten, Tyler Water Utilities did buy this two-hundred-plus acre property to the west of Bullard. It's about sack, ten miles southwest of the city, with the intention that eventually we would be building a new wastewater treatment plant and eliminating the current South Side wastewater treatment plant. That's a long-range plan. We're not expected to even begin planning and funding and getting approval through TCEQ for at least another ten years on that plant. However, we do need to start making plans and arrangements and funding arrangements for the outfall main that's going to transport the wastewater from the current plant to the new plant. So last year, we, in, we approved a contract with KSA Engineers for a multi-phase project to do the preliminary work to identify the route for the sewer main, as well as start the surveying and easement acquisition process. So last year was the first year, that was phase one of the project. They are complete with that phase. That phase did the work necessary between the existing South Side plant and County Road one-twenty-nine, which is about halfway between the two facilities. This year, the current contract that we're asking for approval for is the phase two for that work, which will take, which is for the segment between County Road one-twenty-nine and this new plant. So the contract, the work that they're doing is updating property ownership between the two facilities. They're getting permission to survey from the properties. They're developing where wetlands may exist along this proposed route. They're defining the alignment, flood zone areas. They're doing the surveying work so that they can start writing the field notes that will become the easements. We are not actually procuring the easements with this, with these last year's and this year's contracts, but we are getting the information necessary to write the easement document so that next year, when we go into phase three, we can start that acquisition process. So again, this is a multi-year, multi-phase project. We've just completed phase one. We're now asking for approval for phase two for the twenty-eighteen, nineteen South Side outfalls, who are line routing and concept design.
You know, what, one of the things that Tyler Water Utilities has done extremely well is the very long-term planning, and by securing that land many years ago, and then doing the actual planning on where the route is going to be, is also very favorable to the property owners, so they are not caught at the last minute when we're trying to, to get the easement. So they have time to also plan and, and see the long-term effects. And so I'm, I'm very supportive of this and very supportive of Tyler Water Utilities for being proactive on this activity. So thank you all for, for doing it.
Are there any plans over the next ten years to expand the capacity at South Side?
No, sir. I'm, I don't believe that there are any plans to expand the capacity of the existing South Side. We are making improvements to the existing plant.
Yes, and, and I think that's, go ahead, you want to make that point?
And so you not only have the improvements to the existing plant, but one of the things that we expect to see is, as we work on the infill and infiltration issue, the INI that has been part of the consent decree, you will begin to increase capacity as you start to decrease the amount of essentially storm water that's entering into our system. So the amount of wastewater that's getting down there to the plant will decrease just by eliminating sources of INI.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually going to gain capacity, which will actually, very possibly, let's say, push out the years on the new facility as well, so.
That's correct.
It, it, the work that we're doing is also a cost savings to the public in the long run, because you don't have to build this as fast.
Correct.
So.
But we are going to need it, and we are going to need a route.
Oh, it's definitely going to be, definitely.
And it is, and we need to have our routes, and we need to have our easements in place.
You know, and, and also, the, the way that the federal government has become so involved in water and wastewater issues, to the point of micromanaging, it is also making it very difficult for the smaller communities around us to have the expertise to deal with the federal government. So, you know, it, I, I see this as an opportunity for us to reach out to other communities and, and help them with the expertise that the federal government is just, they're so restricted now and so involved, that if you're a small town, you, you just cannot deal with them. You, you can't afford the expertise, so.
And this is, we'll give.
This, this will be a great opportunity for all of us to work together in the future as well.
Mayor, I move to approve M one.
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by Nix. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M two?
Mayor and Council, throughout two thousand seventeen, Tyler Water Utilities staff began an assessment of various sewer creek crossings that were in danger of compromise. These particular sewer creek crossings that make aerial crossings over creeks are in need of repair and replacement. As you know, the consent decree does not specifically outline sewer creek crossings for replacement. However, in definitions on page twelve, under subsection QQ, waters in the state of Texas are defined by the Texas water flow that include but not limited to groundwater, lakes, bays, ponds, springs, rivers, and also creeks. To this end, addressing these repairs also is a preventive measure mentioned in the consent decree. In two thousand seventeen, council gave authority to begin the design work, and our city engineer, Ms. Crossman, will further explain.
As Dr. Johnson has explained, this was a project that was identified by the water utility staff as part of their just normal operation and maintenance. They identified these various creek crossings were starting to erode, the pipes had not yet broken, but there were some sagging occurring at the joints. So we did hire Elige Engineering Corporation in two thousand seventeen to start the design for these five areas. We'll be shoring up the actual creek, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought.
Creek banks.
Yeah, the creek banks, the, the supports that's holding the lines up. In some cases, we'll be rerouting the line to get it into a more stable area to begin with. So the five areas that we're dealing with are along West Mud Creek for the most part, and then one over in the Holly Tree area. So we're looking at south of Reef Road between Donnybrook and Covey, one between Donnybrook and Sutherland, which is south of Lowe's. Going further south, we'll be behind the ETMC clinic there on South Broadway. And then the last two areas, we're going to jump down to the Holly Tree area, where we're going to be working on an area between Prestonwood Circle and Turnberry Circle. And then the final area is between Spring Creek Drive and Holly Creek, Holly Creek Drive. So we did put the project out for bid. We received bids in, on January twenty-second. We received five bids, and A Shool and Company was the low bid with a bid of three hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred twelve dollars. So we are asking that you award a construction contract to A Shool for that amount for these various sewer creek crossing repairs.
Any questions?
Wanted to say thank you to staff. I'd probably, I know I've sent staff pictures of at least four of these over the years. So I'm super happy that we're addressing these and getting it taken care of. They need to be shored up and secured. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Nix, a second by everybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Cassandra just picked somebody.
Nix.
She, Deborah looked at you.
M three. Oh, did that bother you, Deborah? That's the only thing I've done to bother you today, though. It's not bad.
Get Mayor, Mayor and Council, you invited M three before you, which is a request that city council consider reviewing and accepting the revenue expenditure report for quarter ending December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. So this is our first quarter of the fiscal year. The, the attached city of Tyler revenue expenditure report provides information about the general fund and includes all major operating funds that account for about seventy percent of our appropriations. The remaining thirty percent are trust funds, capital project funds, internal service funds, and some special revenue funds. This report compares actual revenues and expenses to date with revenues and expenses as of the same period last year. Budgeted revenue expenditures amounts for the fiscal year can also be compared with current projections. And I'll just kind of hit some of the broad highlights on some of the major funds. The general fund, we're projecting revenues to be about one-point-two million greater than budget. It's largely due to sales tax. Year-to-date, we're up about seven-and-a-half percent on sales tax. Hopefully, that trend will continue, but we'll continue to monitor sales tax as we always do. Expenditures are expected to be almost one-point-seven million less than budget, and a large part of that is due to just vacant positions that we're trying to get filled. Water Utilities revenues are expected to be about one-point-one million less than budget. I'm sure you can figure out, figure that out based on the rain that we're getting. And expenditures are expected to be almost eight-hundred thousand less than budget. Solid waste revenues are projected to be about a hundred-and-twelve thousand greater than budget, largely due to roll-off and commercial revenues. And also, the expenditures are expected to be about a hundred-and-twelve, a hundred-and-thirteen thousand greater than budget. So we'll continue to monitor those, those expenditures and see if there's anything we can do there to reduce those costs. Airport fund, projected revenues are about ninety-one thousand less than budget. Expenditures are going to be about a hundred-and-nineteen less than budget. And development services, revenues are about a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand less than budget. Expenditures are about a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand less than budget. Also, the hotel motel tax fund, projecting revenues to be about nineteen thousand greater than budget. And those are some of the major funds. Health fund, claims are, are looking real good so far on the health fund. Maybe we should knock on wood here. But we're looking at coming in under budget of two-point-four, two-and-a-half million. Right now, what we're seeing is, we're not seeing as many of some of the shop claims that we've seen in the past. So hopefully, that trend will continue, we'll continue to monitor the health fund as well as all the other funds within the city. So having said that, our recommendation is that you all review and accept the revenue expenditure report for the quarter ending December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and then I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Uh, a motion by Moore, a second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M four?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be before you to talk to you about a compensation study engagement with Springstead Incorporated for the city of Tyler. I'd like to give you a little bit of background on how we actually got here. In two thousand ten, the city of Tyler did a compensation study for the entire city where we looked at market value as well as internal value. Of course, market value is how competitive are we with the markets that are out there competing for the same employees that we're trying to hire? And the internal value is the value that the city of Tyler assesses or weighs on potential characteristics of the job. So does a job require a bachelor's degree versus a non-bachelor's degree? Does a job work indoors versus outdoors? Does it require certifications versus not? And so we established a weighting system on our internal value, as well as looked at the market value, and created our overall compensation plan. It is recommended that you perform this task about every five years. Now, it must be noted that when we performed it in two thousand ten, it took us three years to implement it based on costs associated with it. And also, during the past nine years, we've seen some economic turns in the city and revenue that we've received, and so our greatest fear has been in actually redoing this. It's not necessarily the cost of the compensation study, but the cost of implementing it once we find out where people will shift or where they won't shift. So one of the things we want to do is, at this particular point, we've waited so long until we've had some compression issues, as well as some just out-of-market comparison issues. Leading up to this timeframe, we have done makeshift things internally, where we've looked at specific titles, and we went out to market, and we gauged, and we've reevaluated them internally, and we've replaced them into the pay plan. However, when we've looked at our lower-paying employees, we moved them from nine dollars and fifteen cents an hour to ten dollars and fifty-five cents an hour to twelve dollars an hour, and there were already jobs that were in that pay range of twelve dollars an hour, so we're causing a little bit of compression there. As well as, one of the things that I looked at specifically is, we are being squashed from both ends. So our employees that are at retirement age are doing what they should. They're retiring, and they're going to live in their best lives, but the employees that we're bringing in are not staying with us. And specifically with the departments that we're going to be looking at today, they're ranging about only two years. And so as you know, when you hire an employee, by the time you get them to the two-year mark, that's about the time they start giving you a return on your investment. What's happened over the years is, because we've been having a difficulty to recruit, we've instituted training programs where you get on-the-job training here at the city of Tyler, and you're able to sit for your certifications and your exams. So we're taking in all the sunk costs and getting that employee up and running to be able to be performing for us. And the surrounding cities are looking at that, they're raising their pay ranges up, and they're cherry-picking from our training program. So the city of Tyler is training for the county, training for Longview, training for Overton, training for Frankston, and they're taking our employees. And so it's really time for us to look at the pay plan, build some integrity back into it so that we're able to maintain those employees. One of the things that didn't happen at the last compensation study is that we really didn't build in a retention policy. And what I mean by that is, once we get the employee, what are we doing to make sure that they're staying here with us? And so the reason why it's going to be very easy or effective for us to contract right now is to allow the on-staff employees here at the city and the HR department and other departments to really look at recruitment, onboarding, actively engaging the employees, and trying to retain. And we're also asking them to build into the model a retention mechanism so that we're able to save those employees that are outstanding, that are well-educated or very well-certified, that are, would be headhunted by these other entities, that we'll be able to retain them without them wanting to look at, I'm sorry, outside of the city of Tyler. Also, contracting with this particular company will allow us to expedite this process as they have the ability to access varying data from varying data points. They conduct these studies for other cities. Most recently, I think the city of Waco went through this study with Springstead. We did ask for quotes, and we did go out and look at other companies, but this company came in at the lowest bid, as well as this company at one time was Waters Consulting Group, which is the same company that did us in two twenty-ten. So they have our history, and they understand the philosophies of the city of Tyler. The study will cover sixty-five titles located in these departments. We're looking at about one-fifth of the city being actually assessed. About a hundred-and-sixty people will probably be affected by this particular study. These departments have identified funding in their departments to be able to cover the cost of the study, as well as any implementation cost. And that's through to the savings that Hedrick alluded to with staffing, savings in salaries and benefits. The study will look at these particular markets. These are the same markets that we've looked at in the past. These are. These are either markets that are highly competitive for us and we're losing our employees to, or these are markets that are similarly situated as we are, so we thought that these markets were still applicable and we wanna continue to use them to review the study.
Can we change one from College Station and call it Brian?
Sure thing, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. The study duration will be from three to six months. Our most critical area that we're looking at right now would be the Water Department, and so that would be the one that we will have them to do in the first phase, and they will put that one on a fast track. As you know, we have some compliance things that we need to be doing and we need those people on-staff and ready to go. And then we will spend the three months after that one is done, working on the other departments. Again, they're gonna implement a cost scenario for us, so we'll know what it'll cost for us to implement this pay plan study, as well as an ability to score future jobs into the plan and be able to fit in there seamlessly while helping us to build a plan to eliminate compression on what we already have. The other thing that we're going to do is, we're gonna look at other departments every year based on the need, and it'll be based on the turnover rate as well as the requests that are received during the budget process. So we anticipate that we'll do that one-fifth of the departments every year for the next five years so that we really don't get out of whack like we did this time. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
I think this is really important. I'm glad you're doing this. I think that whenever we get to the point that we're having turnover like we are in some of these departments, we need to address this and we need to work on it. Where are the areas of most turnover, just out of curiosity?
We are finding that we have a lot of turnover in the laborer-type position. So you'll think the Water Service Center, really the Water Service Center, as well as like Parks and Recreation. We see a lot of turnover in the solid waste department. And the solid waste is not so much about being outside as it is. It's when the oil and gas industry revs back up or long haul revs up, they're CDL drivers and they go where the money is, and you know, you really can't blame them. But we wanna create an area here where our pay is moderate to good and that our benefits balance it out. So when you go out and do that long-range hauling, you can't get insurance like you can get at the City of Tyler, or you can't get the other benefits that we do offer. And so a part of that group that we're creating for the, we call it the ROAR, recruitment, onboarding, actively engaged retention, is to really promote some of the other benefits that the City of Tyler offers that the employees may not be as aware or may have forgotten that we actually have there. So when they start looking to go out, they can see that our overall compensation plan is beneficial to them.
Move to approve, M four?
Motion by Westbrook. Second. By Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we're to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few items of note, primarily about just telling our story. Communications has released the latest installment of our Call to Serve video series this week. The video features Tyler Police Officer Carrie Long talking about her job at Tyler PD and her lifelong ambition to be an officer. As of Friday, the Facebook post of the video had reached over ten thousand people and the video had been watched over forty-seven hundred times. You can not only find it on our Facebook page, but you can also find it on YouTube. Also, we've released two new episodes of our Roses and Weeds podcast, the first of which was on the Tyler Innovation Pipeline, kind of a deep dive into that and about the different services and what people are using it towards. And also, our city librarian, Ashley Taylor, came on to talk about the city library and the different services that are being provided. But the second podcast that we just released on it was on Black History Month in Tyler. We had Councilman Ed Moore and former Councilman Daryl Bowery talk about Black History Month in Tyler and just not only their experiences with the different programs we've done, but also just of the history of our community. And also, this is a good opportunity for a reminder that we're having our annual Black History Month celebration on Thursday night at seven o'clock PM at Liberty Hall focusing on the history of fraternities and sororities in our city of Tyler. And then finally, we have the Tyler Corporate Challenge is coming back. This event started in nineteen ninety and took a hiatus for a few years due to some frozen position in the Parks Department. On average, this event has had twenty-six local businesses participating, creating over two-hundred-and-seventy teams with twelve-hundred participants. Registration and sponsorship packages are available online, and then also we encourage, we're working on our City of Tyler departments to join in the fun as well.
Okay, and we have no executive session today? So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.